I call me in order for those who care to. Please rise for an opening prayer. And salute to our flag. If you would bow your head to me. Dear my father, thank you for staying with me. Every time we spend together and for allowing us to represent this community allows us to make the decisions that you want us to make to continue in the Republic. In your name I pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for what it stands, one nation, undeniably, with liberty and justice for all.
There's several items on Mayor's announcements, appointments and votes that are not listed there. A couple of items. One birthday, Mr. John Jones. Birthday, Mr. Jones.
Thank you very much.
Everything you've ever wanted is right here in this car. I just want you to know that in all the wisdom and where you part, I'm you.
Twenty-seven is pretty rough, guys.
Yes, it is. Fourteenth time or fifteenth time, sixteenth time. Happy birthday, Mr. Jones.
Happy birthday, Mayor.
Thank you. City of Ash Grove will be hosting a regional meeting and workshop with the Missouri Municipal League on Thursday, October 29th at 2015. Please see your red folders for more information. Council, if you'd like to attend, please let Brendan know for registration. Additionally, Daniel Harder's father-in-law, Jerry Gillen, passed away on Saturday. Visitation will be tomorrow at the Adams Funeral Home in Nixa from 6:00 to 8:00. Funeral will be on Wednesday at 10:00, also at the Adams Funeral Home. So wish Daniel and his family the very best. Also tonight, I would like to ask for a motion to appoint Jason Hugo at McAdoo's O'Reilly Hospitality to the EEZ Board, EEZ Board for a five-year term. Thank you. Would you like to have a motion on that?
Motion.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. And last but not least, we have one of our new officers, Mr. Lucas Perry. Welcome, Lucas. Chief.
Good evening. Have a good day tonight.
Good. How are you, sir?
Well, I'm honored. Can't miss him. He's taller than me. I'm honored tonight to introduce to you a new officer who started today, Luke Perry, Perry. I'm sorry, I said Perry and I was not going to make that mistake. Perry. He comes to us with 10 years of law enforcement experience correctional side up in Jefferson City and Algoa Corrections Facility and some at a local jail in pickup there too as a lieutenant. And so he comes with a lot of experience and I'm going to say the bigger picture. Did wonderful in his interview process and we're excited to have him on board starting today. So welcome, Luke Perry.
Welcome. Thank you.
Are you done with your announcements?
No.
Yes, sure. Oh, you're not done yet? Okay. All right.
I'd like to open them now, says a participation. No.
But now they have to go up there to the podium, so. I mean, we can't, if you can't see it, here's the official birthday cake for our mayor. You got a palm tree instead of a candle and here's everything you ever wanted, anything you ever wished for. This is like Frank Wagnall's dictionary or whatever in a, you know, in a pickle jar on Johnny Carson's porch. But there's your birthday card official from the city. You also got from Ms. Poole. We'll show that off. A sleeve of golf balls that Ms. Poole won at the chamber outing, so.
Thank you, Ms. Poole.
So you got that as well. And of course, we didn't have gold stars, so you got a couple of blue stars this year. So happy birthday.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you very much. I was looking for the orange whip, but that's okay.
No, well, you got the, got the palm trees.
I'll take the palm tree. Thank you very much. I'm sure you made that. Thank you very much. John, do you feel older?
If Daniel was here, he'd be singing.
Do you feel older, John?
Do I feel older? Every moment that I'm here.
I should have never asked that question. Well, thank you very much, Council. Appreciate it. Now, is it?
Now you're ready.
Okay. Like to open it up now as just a participation. Anyone wishing to speak to anything not on the agenda, please come forward, state your name, step in, give us your best three minutes.
I know Jim was kind of scared when he saw me sitting out here tonight because usually when I show up, it's about to complain about something. But tonight, what I wanted to talk about, the last couple of years, I've had the privilege of working for the park department in the summer rec program. And part of what I did was travel around to various towns with the kids to the various parks. I've been to Aurora, Willard, Mount Vernon, Ozark, Springfield, Nixa and Branson. And let me tell you something, you guys here in Republic have no clue what a fantastic park department you have. These guys do a job that is unbelievable. You know, Branson got all the money in the world to spend on their parks and you go in there and they're plain Jane. You go to our park over on Miller Road, it's absolutely beautiful. These other parks just don't have a clue what's going on. Jared and the people that work for him here are very proud of what they do and I think you guys need to recognize them. So that was why I came here tonight, so.
Dick, we appreciate it.
Excellent. We agree.
And we agree. Absolutely agree. No matter what Jared says about himself, we always agree with you, Dick.
I ain't paying $1 to you, I didn't.
He's hired next year.
And Richard, I appreciate you coming and I appreciate the positive comments. And if it were negative, it'd been fine too. Just want to let you know that it's been fine too.
No, I feel like you go to Bradley and Bradley.
And we appreciate it. Celebrate when we need to celebrate. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to anything not on the agenda, please come forward, state your name, sign in, give us your best three minutes. Scene none, as the participation closed. Need a motion on the consent agenda?
Motion.
A motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Any abstentions? Motion carries. On the financial report, welcome Mr. O'Donnell. Please give us an overview, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I trust everybody received their package at the last minute. It's been a busy month so far. I added some notes to the report for unrestricted cash balances. We had found an error in the June activity and it's pretty self-explanatory. Basically, there was a software error where we were missing some payroll expense data that would, that affected the cash balances and overstated them. So June and July are revised downward but are still quite healthy. Thank you very much. So, excuse me. So that was, that total net pay was $166,000, but it dropped us down a little bit, but not enough to be concerned about. With respect to the revenue and expenses, we're still doing better than last year in comparison. And also, I'm happy to report that preliminary numbers on sales taxes for the month of August, we once again have hit the mark. We received, or I should say Department of Revenue collected in August, $251,880.08 on behalf of Republic, which is now in our bank account this month. And along those same lines, fire sales tax, also had a healthy deposit of $31,482.42. Dwayne, don't spend it all in one place, please. We'll have more on the sales taxes at the second meeting once I have the information regarding our vehicle fuel, excuse me, motor fuel tax and motor sales tax numbers. With that, I await your questions.
Questions, comments, discussion for Mr. O'Donnell. Anything at all? Scene none, need a motion to approve financial report?
Motion second.
Motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. O'Donnell. Appreciate it, sir. For some staff, Mr. Chriskey, anything, sir?
No, sir.
Mr. Derrickson?
No, sir.
Fantastic. Future community events. Welcome, Mr. Keely. Give us a, I gotta ask before you get started. Your list is really short. I'm impressed. However, give us an update on the mud run. I gotta hear about that. Let's hear about that.
Very good stuff. Very good stuff. Really, really happy with the way that event went off. I took a lot of planning, a lot of help from other city departments. I do want to recognize, and I don't want to miss anybody, but all the way from planning to police, to fire, to public works, those guys all helped and assisted in that adventure and it went off pretty much without a hitch. So we had 340 kids at the event at Brookline Park, which turned out to be a fantastic location. From 27 cities across three states, they came to Brookline Park, so that was the good stuff. We had one little minimal injury, but nothing significant at all. We were really, really worried about that. But we got 340 kids through the mud and they were happy. It was really good stuff. Can't wait to do it again. We thought we would get around 2 to 240 and we ended up with 340. And I think the sky's the limit as far as next year. In our post-event surveys, we had about a 42% response rate and they all said they're coming back. So to think that we might get 600 or 700 next year if we can accommodate them, and those are big questions we have to answer if we can do that, do the parking and other stuff out there, I don't think that's an understatement. I think we can get there each year. So it went off really well.
How many states, how many, would you say?
27 cities from southwest Missouri, northeast Oklahoma, northwest Arkansas, 340 kids, so.
How many states?
Three states. Yeah. Good stuff. And I only look for that to grow because you have to travel to Columbia if you want to do another one in our area. So, and that's actually what we patterned ours after and they went about 250% growth rate from year one to year two. If we do the same, that's a lot, so.
Awesome. Great job.
But I do want to really thank the other departments. They helped us out tremendously, so.
Awesome. Thanks.
Also, another bit of good news, our AMP events have really, really been going well lately. Our last three events probably went from 200 to 250 each and every time. We went through a little growing period of what to do out there and what would be popular and I think we finally nailed it. Our advertising, so that is where it should be now. And this last Saturday night for Kids Take the Mic Night and for Big Hero Six, we tried to count and we had right at 250 people there. So that was really, really good stuff. 26 kids got up on stage and sang. It was, it was good stuff, so. Singing was good stuff, yeah. Anyway, future community events for the remainder of September and on into October. September 15th through November 12th is Arthritis Foundation Exercise Program. Those courses are offered on Tuesdays and Thursdays at 1:30 PM at the Republic Community Center. September 17th through the 20th is the 54th Annual Steamer Rama. September 21st and 28th, it's a Monday, so it's Toddler Open Gym. That's a tail at 10:00 AM in the Republic Activities Building. September 25th is the last day to register for our youth girls' fall volleyball program at for grades three through eight. October 2nd is the last day to register for our fall adult basketball program and those game days will be on Wednesdays at the Republic Activities Building. Thanks, Eric.
Thank you, Mr. Keely. Appreciate it. Board commissions and committee schedule. Board of adjustments, October 1st. Capital improvements has been moved to September 30th. City Council meeting September 28th and October 12th. Planning and zoning is September 21st. All the old business and tabled items, Bill Number 15-17 was tabled till today, this particular meeting. Would like to have a motion to remove Bill Number 15-17 from the table.
Motion.
Have a motion.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Any abstentions? Motion carries.
I just need a, Dave was going to request that it be postponed again till October 12th with an explanation of why.
Right. What we'd like to do tonight is provide City Council with an update, the site visits that we've been doing over the summer, provide results of what some of those site inspections have revealed, answer any questions you may have, and then a request that we postpone to August 12th.
October 12th. I'm sorry. Is that correct?
Yeah. Yeah. Just the same thing you did. Of the 153 affected entities, we have visited 93% or 142. The remaining 11, the bulk of those are city-owned facilities and I, those aren't unknown qualities or quantities, we know what those facilities are. Provided a summary table there of the sites we have visited, the table there at the bottom. The vast majority of folks are going to have absolutely no problems meeting our new regulations. We have a number who are going to be exempt, a number that, a number of those that may need a slight change in their cleaning frequencies. But by and large, what we're seeing is that this is not going to be a major upset to the majority of the affected entities. I do want to make sure Council understands that these are the results that Jerry Kendall's obtained. Jerry is interning for us this year. He is uniquely qualified to work on this project over 23 years in the commercial plumbing business. Owned his own plumbing business for a long, for a number of years, holds a master plumber certification, master gas fitters certification, and also worked three years with the Department of Natural Resources in their water and wastewater systems. And so with that brief summary, I'm going to ask Jerry to step up. He's got just a bit of information that he wants to relay and then a little bit of questions if Council may help.
Hi, Jerry. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Hello. I would like to address more than anything what I've seen over the course of the last 45 days or so. As Mr. Brock said, most of the facilities that we have seen are, have it, we've made recommendations that suggest maybe a tighter interval between cleanings or some minor modifications that absolutely cost no money whatsoever. They just simply weren't, say, accessible to the unit that was removing the grease. Those are by and large encompassing over 82% as you see. Overall, the inspections tell a completely different story than what we really expected, what I expected when we originally started. We learned that many of the people that are responsible for the daily maintenance of the FOGS equipment simply had no idea either that the equipment was there or what that was supposed to be. There was a box in the floor. They didn't know what it was about. They had no idea how to get the lid off or they didn't have tools to get the lids off. And then if they could open it up, they really weren't aware of what they were looking at once they got the lid open. So a large part of what we have done over the last month or so is, is an educational program, quite honestly. Go into these facilities, explain why we're here, explain why it's important for everyone in the city, and then explain how these things are cleaned and how the interceptors need to be maintained if they're going to maintain, be expected to maintain any sort of life The churches are also worth, worthy of note, I would think, because what I originally thought that we were going to see was a large number of churches that were feeding several people every month. It's kind of what I'm used to in a church. More often than not, the view of the churches can be summed up by one lady's statement. She said that what we found is that we don't like doing dishes when we come to fellowship. And it's, so they bring plasticware and paper plates, plastic cups. Meals are prepared at home. They bring them in crock pots. Perhaps there's, the oven is there to warm something, to keep it warm. They enjoy their meal. They throw up most of their stuff away and the largest use that their kitchens get is washing the serving ladles, quite honestly. So it's, it's been a very enlightening and educational experience, to say the least. In the end, it's education that we're providing with this program. It's given us the opportunity to answer questions, address concerns. Sometimes we're met with the, I wouldn't say hostility, but some resistance would be the best way to put it. And that's our opportunity to answer those questions directly, direct, directly answer every one of them, address concerns and explain why this is an important program that we're trying to implement. We tell those that we visit, that the easiest way by far to get grease out of the system is simply to not have it introduced into the system in the first place and we're here to help that happen. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Love to have them ask questions. However, when we do that, we get into the second phases of the discussion. So with that said.
Hey, and a couple things, too. Is it?
I'll tell you if you're out of order.
All right. Well, and on this summary sheet that was passed out.
Yes, sir.
26, and Jerry can correct me or David can correct me, 26 facilities here within the city limits have what we would consider moderate or major changes that need to be made to their systems. And within those two categories, we did a little further research and you don't have this on your summary sheet, but we did a little further research. Those that fall within the moderate category, those expenses to those facilities are going to be anywhere from maybe $100 up to $1,500 with an average of about $540. So not a major expense, things that could be done fairly simply and easily and not very expensive. Those six or nine, pardon me, that are within the major category, those get into a little more of an expense and that skips into the, you know, on an average, $7,000 per facility. And we do have nine of those facilities that fall into that category. So those are the ones that we're most concerned with because some of these are smaller facilities that maybe don't have the resources of a, of a franchise like, you know, I think on McDonald's or Pizza Hut or one of those type of facilities, they have a little more resources. So one of the programs that we were discussing along with this is, and other cities have done this, is to put together some sort of a loan program so that we can provide some funding to these facilities so that they can tap into our resources. We can offer, you know, a two, three or four-year type loan to help them pay for those, you know, those expenses and then it would be billed back during their monthly water and sewer bill that would be get. That's not been, or they would get, that's not been put on the agenda yet for City Council, but it is something that we have considered, thinking that would be the easiest and best way for us to get these facilities to come into compliance. So if that is something that anyone has any questions about, of course, we'd be happy to answer questions, you know, outside, you know, between now and the next meeting, but that is something that we're going to put together and have brought forward to City Council as well.
I would also note that of that, those nine that are listed as having, needing major physical changes, a full one-third of those have already, I've been talking with them, they're already well on their way to addressing the issues on their own and very happy to do so, saying that they want to be good stewards of the community and, and those types of feedbacks are really important, I believe. But they're already moving ahead, so even those numbers are somewhat less than what's revealing there.
Two of those are also city facilities.
Two of those are also city facilities. That is correct.
All right. You're asking us to be tabled to the October 12th meeting. Will I give you enough time?
I believe so, Mayor.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Fantastic. I will entertain a motion to table Bill Number 15-17 until the October 12th meeting.
Motion.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Jerry, David, thank you very much. Thank you for your work on this and looking forward to the end result. Thank you. On the new business, like to have a motion, have the first read of Bill Number 15-24.
Motion.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Try that once more. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Any abstentions? Motion carries.
In ordinance of the City Council of the City of Republic, Missouri, amending Chapter 615, Republic City Code, Massage Establishment, Article 2, Massage Therapist Licensing, Section 615.030, License Fee.
Thank you, Brenda. And Brenda, give us the overview since you're on.
Sure. For the massage licensing, the, the way it was set up, the renewal fee was based on when they purchased their original license. However, we don't have an automatic mechanism to remind us when those are due, so usually those are late getting in. What I am proposing here is to change that term of the license so that it runs also from a January to December like our other business licenses do.
Thank you. Questions, comments, discussion for Ms. Jackson.
Mr. Pikenberry? Just have one. I noticed that you had, if they come in in the fourth quarter, that they pay $1,250 instead of $25. I know we've discussed this in the past, that there's some kind of minimal work that we have to do and a fee associated with that. And I thought we did a little higher on the business licenses. Is $1,250 enough or should we increase that to like 15 or a little more to cover at least our costs?
We can do that. For the massage licensing, it's pretty simple. Basically, the only thing they do is fill out the application and provide us a copy of their state license. The state actually does all the work. We just issue them the permit and make sure that they have it. The business that they're working under, they have the business license and that's where we do all of the background and make sure everything is, the zoning is correct and all of that.
So this particular license isn't as time-consuming as the regular business.
Correct.
I just wanted to make sure the rest of I thought was correct. Thank you.
Additional questions, comments, discussion? Scene none, this is a first read. If you have questions between now and then, please contact Ms. Jackson's City Clerk's Office. On the next item, I'd like to have a motion, have the first read of Bill Number 15-25. Motion.
Second.
A motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Any abstentions? Motion carries.
In ordinance of the City Council of the City of Republic, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to enter into an intergovernmental cooperative agreement on behalf of the City of Republic, Green and Christian County municipalities as to mutual aid for jail and court services.
Thank you, Brenda. Welcome, Chief Lawton. Give us the overview, sir.
Thank you again. I know this might come as a surprise, but the jail overcrowding issues have not resolved themselves in the last 90 days and it is continuing. So this, really what we're doing here is just extending the agreement that you've already approved previously that had an end date and making some modifications to some of the language in it that makes it helpful for the future. So really what it will do is allow us to continue until such time as the parties agree to not have that agreement anymore. I'll open it. And I think as long as this problem continues, I think it's probably the best route to take. So staff recommends that we move forward with this. And I'd happily answer any questions or Ron can answer some additional questions, too, if there's some legal questions about it as well.
Yes. Just, just if you look at your packet, the, the changes are marked in red on the, this version of the agreement, updated from what Council passed earlier this year. Went back and made sure, found some things that might need to be clarified or no major changes other than really paragraph 8.1 with how the agreement is to be terminated.
Thank you. Questions, comments, discussion? Chief Lawton, order. Mr. Derrickson. Thank you, Chief. If you have questions or comments between now and the next meeting, please contact Chief Lawton and Mr. Derrickson. On the next item, I'd like to have a motion, have the first read of Bill Number 15-26.
Motion.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Any abstentions? Motion carries.
In ordinance of the City Council of the City of Republic, Missouri, amending Title 5, Republic City Code, Building and Construction, Chapter 520, Fences and Walls by amending Section 520.020, applicability by adding language regarding permits. Section 520.020, applicability by adding language regarding permits.
Thank you, Brenda. Welcome, Mr. Tyson. Give us the overview, sir.
Thank you. From time to time, as you probably all know, since 2010, the city has required that residents or commercial businesses obtain a permit before installing a fence or wall. And from time to time, we will come across or become aware of somebody who is installing a fence without a permit. On many of those occasions, it is simply a homeowner who is unaware of the requirement to obtain a permit. They are able to eventually get that permit and finish the fence installation without any further trouble. However, there are other times in which the fence is being installed by a commercial contractor who the city knows should be well aware of the requirement to get a permit, yet still has not obtained that permit. And because you can build one of these residential fences so quickly, they can be on the job and then gone before we even become aware of it. And so there are some times when the homeowner can then come and get the permit after the fact and the fence is compliant. But there are other times when the fence itself is not complying with the regulations, and the commercial contractor has completed the work and has left the site. And so the homeowner is left sort of holding the bag, so to speak, and it is, at least from what we have seen, it is often the case that the homeowner was actually acting in good faith, unaware of the requirement, trusted the contractor to know that a permit was needed or whether one was needed, and then to also know what the city's regulations are. So they trust the contractor, the contractor does the work, and then leaves the site, and then the city is then in the position of having to order that the fence be either removed or relocated or altered in some other way, and sometimes the contractor is uncooperative to make that fix. So what this ordinance does is hopefully it allows or authorizes a solution to that problem by giving the city the ability to pursue enforcement against that commercial contractor, not just against the homeowner. Right now, the way the ordinance is written, it only allows the city to pursue enforcement against the homeowner who, like I said, in many cases is acting in good faith. So this would actually allow the city to pursue enforcement against the contractor for performing the work without verifying first that a permit was actually issued, and it will also hold them accountable to build the fence itself in compliance with the city's regulations. If not, the contractor could be punished in accordance with the law.
Thank you. Questions, comments, discussion, Mr. Tyson?
Mr. Quickenbeard? I know the fence situation sticks out like a sore thumb because it's outside and it's prepped on to city property a few times and things like that. What I don't understand is that we're putting this language on one particular thing when, I guess my question is, do we have this language on things like sheds that are bigger than, I think it's 200 square feet or whatever it is, in-ground swimming pools? I know people finish out their basements and don't come and get permits. I mean, there are things all over a property that contractors come in and maybe do without a permit, trying to get away with it, maybe homeowner doesn't know. But the same situation resides across all types of different building situations. So do we have this language on the other ones, and we just don't have it on the fence? Would be my first question. And if we don't have that language on all the other ones, why don't we just put this language across all of our building permits?
Sure. Almost every permit that we issue is issued pursuant to the International Building Code, which the city has adopted as an ordinance. Within that separate document, it's not located within our municipal code, it's a separate book. But within that book, I believe, is language that basically addresses this same issue about being able to go after not just a homeowner, but also a contractor. And that would apply to pretty much every permit we issue. The reason it doesn't apply to fences is because the building code specifically exempts fences from needing a permit. So we have a separate ordinance in our city code that requires a permit for fences, and that's why we're adding that language to this. But I do believe, and Ron can correct me if I'm wrong, I do believe that building code language does give us the same abilities.
Yeah, Garrett and I looked at that this afternoon in the International Building Code, and it's not exactly mirror language, but it says, "Any person or entity who violates the building code is, can be held responsible for that violation." So it would give the same authority as this amendment would for the other building code violations.
I bring up one situation, it was just like last summer, someone in my subdivision had a, like a 12 by 16 portable building assembled, and they stuck it right next to the garage, and it was like two feet off. So it violated several city things. One, you couldn't get to electric meters, and for fire reasons, you couldn't get to that side of the house. It was large enough, it needed a permit, and needed to be so far off the side. It was on top of a 50-foot easement to a pipeline. I mean, it violated several things. And when we went out there, we told them they had to move it, but we did not help them or give them the suggestion that they should be able to go back to the contractor who built that to move it. So they, with their own money, had to do it and were happy. So what I'm saying is that there's a lot of situations like this. In that case, would the city have been able to help them pursue the contractor then that came in and did not put that, they needed a permit?
The city couldn't help them. The city could prosecute the contractor for doing something in violation of the law. And whether or not that helped the individual, we cannot use a criminal prosecution to leverage civil matters. And that, I would ethically be subject, be this barred if I tried to do something like that.
Sure.
But if we want to, if we want to say, "Contractor, you violated the city ordinance by putting this building there and violates the city code," we can haul them out to city court and have the judge hear a case or set a fine if they plead guilty or are found guilty. But that does not necessarily help the homeowner.
It might help the contractor's case though, if they went and moved it real quick for the homeowner, and they were able to show up at court and say...
It could mitigate, but I'm not going to get into the business of using a criminal prosecution in order to leverage assistance to some citizen. I just can't do that.
Right. So in the fence case, we're using the same example then, if the contractor builds it over the line on someone else's property, we can go after that fence company, but it doesn't mitigate any of the problems that we've just said the homeowner has. I mean, it's not going to help the homeowner at all. They still got to, at their own expense, move that fence.
That's correct. Unless they want to go after the fence company.
Right. But I mean, us going after them, then that gets somewhat confusing. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't just picking on one particular building scenario to put a penalty in place. What you're saying is that all the others fall under a different code. The fence does not fall under that international, there isn't an international code for fencing?
As Garrett said, the International Building Code specifically exempts fences from the International Building Code. That's why we adopted the fence code in Chapter 520 is because it's specifically exempted from the International Building Code, and we required the person to, the homeowner to have a permit. We have seen that there is a loophole there for a contractor who doesn't verify that a permit has been issued or doesn't bill according to code, and he can just walk away, and we're hoping this will put some teeth in it so that the homeowner's not the only person stuck with it. But as far as using it as leverage to get a contractor to do something, that is not what we would do.
Sure.
Now, if the homeowner goes out and because of this violation hires another contractor to come in and repair whatever damage has been done, I can take that in consideration in the court case to try and get restitution to them for that. But I cannot leverage a criminal prosecution to make them go out and do something. Now, if they do that on their own, that's up to them.
Sure.
But we can try to get restitution, but the problem with restitution is, I face this every week out there, is if you've got $5,000 worth of damages, and the maximum we can find someone is $1,000, are they going to take a $1,000 fine, or are they going to pay $5,000? So I've got limited leverage there.
So it's more a matter of crackdown on the contractors that aren't doing the right thing?
Right.
And a lot of them are repeat offenders.
Yeah.
I only have one other question then. I know we've kind of maybe discussed this in the past on fence issues, but having a requirement maybe for the homeowner to get a survey or the fence company to get a survey. I know you don't, it costs a lot less when you don't have to physically print one and all those types of things. All they're doing is coming and putting down markers, finding pins, and making sure the pins are actually in the right spots. Putting down markers or flags is typically, you know, 100, 150 bucks. It's not a huge expense when you're doing the fence, but it's just something to throw out there for discussion on whether we might want to add that in. And have we, have you guys thought about that, and what are your thoughts?
Yes, sir. We've discussed that on multiple occasions in the past. Never concluded to bring it forward as an ordinance amendment to actually require that. I would want some time probably to reconsider that and discuss that again, if that's the direction council wanted to take. I think there are some options. Certainly, there's some value that could be added to the permitting process if that level of detailed information was available to us. Probably some value added to the homeowner too, to have that information available to them to supply to their contractor or to use themselves when they're installing their fence. But it's, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be necessary, I think, to require a survey in every case, so I definitely would want to take a look at what options we could provide applicants in that scenario, because it would be that additional expense that would be, how do you say, relative to, but still would be that additional burden being imposed by the city. So I would definitely want to consider when that would actually be necessary.
Do we require a survey to do anything else, like even building the house itself or a building? Do we require them to get a survey, or is that always a something that a builder will do on that magnitude of, you know, build?
Right. No, we do not require a survey document be submitted for a residential building permit, whether it's an accessory building or even a single-family house.
Okay.
In most cases, in almost every case, these are being built in platted subdivisions where property pins are readily accessible, and so those can be marked and flagged, and the building inspector can then verify in the field the setback distances and whatnot. And so in those cases, as long as they provide a detailed enough site plan, it does not have to have been prepared by a surveyor.
There's probably not a mortgage company on the planet that doesn't require a survey at closing to, to help. Thank you.
Additional questions, comments, discussion, Mr. Tyson? This is a first read. If you have questions between now and then, please contact Mr. Tyson. Mr. Tyson, if you would, at Mr. Quickenbeard's request, look into that particular piece that he had requested on and just provide some information until the next council meeting.
We will.
Thank you. On other business, Resolution number 15-R-58, a resolution, the City Council of the City of Republic, Missouri, authorizing execution of state municipal lease purchase agreement to finance the acquisition of a dump truck. I'd have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion in a second. Mr. O'Donnell, give us the overview, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Back on May 11th, council passed Resolution 15-R-33, which approved the purchase of an international model 7300 dump truck. And our budget execution calls for this purchase to be financed over a three-year period, predicated on a delivery date approximately mid-September. We went out and solicited proposals from eight different financial institutions for a three-year fixed-rate tax-exempt lease purchase agreement. And in the Exhibit H, you see the results there. Five responded, and Commerce Bank gave us the best rate and lowest interest to be paid out. And therefore, we are requesting passage and adoption of 15R-58s to enter into an agreement with Commerce Bank regarding this lease purchase.
Questions, comments, discussion, Mr. O'Donnell? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. On the next item, Resolution number 15-R-59, a resolution, the City Council of the City of Republic, Missouri, authorizing the police department to apply for the 2016 local law enforcement block grant or L-E-B-D. I'd like to have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion in a second. Welcome, Chief Lawton. Give us the overview, sir.
Thank you again. Appreciate it. The police department is requesting council's authorization to apply for a 2016 local law enforcement block grant, amount of $6,400 and a little bit of change. Specifically, the grant would provide us 30 traffic safety vests that are ANSI-approved, which are the American National Standards Institute-approved for proper reflectability as well as, they're terrible apart in case they get caught on a vehicle. In addition to that, 10 sets of our traffic spring cones, which is a product that we started using a couple of years ago, that are lightweight cones that we carry in the trunk of our car that actually compress and take up a very little bounce space, and they're very usable, they're very user-friendly for our officers, that would allow us to put one in every one of our vehicles. Addition to that, 30 rescue tourniquets. These are tourniquets that would work in conjunction with the medical trauma kits, the 10 medical trauma kits that we have. And those are really officer and public use in the event of a major trauma or gunshot wound. Officers would be able to provide emergency, on-scene emergency medical treatment until fire or the ambulance personnel could get there, would help with stopping major bleeding. We're asking that we move forward on this, this local law enforcement block grant in the amount of $6,474.60. Open for any questions?
Questions, comments, discussion, Chief Lawton? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Any abstentions?
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you, Brenda.
Resolution 15-R-60 was removed by staff. On the next item, Resolution number 15-R-61, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Republic, Missouri, authorizing the city ministry to enter into an agreement with Civic Plus for development of a new city website. I'd like to have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Have a motion in a second. Mr. Christie, give us the overview, sir.
I'll give a quick overview, and there's a couple of people here, Justin being the main one, that can discuss the actual site and what they're going to do. But this has been a lengthy process. It goes back really a year from now that we started the process and initiated our request for proposals. We had a committee that went through the proposals, did their homework, did their research on the company that had submitted. Eventually, we got to this point where we asked City Council to approve negotiations with Civic Plus. That has been completed, so that's what we have in front of us tonight, is the agreement to enter into with Civic Plus for development of a new site. As you can see in the exhibit, I broke down the actual cost that would be part of the development. Of course, the biggest cost would be the actual Civic Plus development of the website. During our negotiation and during our discussions, we also, as staff determined that we thought it would be in the city's best interest to add two new modules to the website. One would be a Civic Send component, which is like a newsletter that can push information out to the general public, among many other things that Justin's getting into. And then the second, or a third module that we would be requesting would be Civic Ready, and that's on the emergency management side of things. Dwayne, Lynn, and Mike can all relay their feelings on Civic Ready and what that could possibly do for us. And then, of course, there's the annual maintenance and hosting fees that go along with this as well. The program that Civic Plus does put together allows for this to be financed over a three-year period at no interest. So what's proposed in the contract is just that. It would be an annual cost, starting in next year's budget, 2016, of $14,635. And then, once that is completed, and the site becomes ours, as long as we maintain our relationship with Civic Plus and, of course, pay our maintenance and hosting fees, there's a, is it a four-year? Every fourth year, they will restore and renovate our site again and update it for any changes we would want to make. So the recommendation is to go ahead and include the contract with Civic Plus, and Justin Forte with Civic Plus has been working with us throughout the whole year. And Justin Forte with Civic Plus has been working with us throughout the whole year, putting us all together and he can answer any questions. And Dwayne and Lynn and Mike can answer questions about Civic Ready.
Thank you.
Would you like to add anything to Mr. Chriskey?
I tell you what, he's very, very good. He really hit the key points and, and the redesign piece is pretty big because five years ago, mobile responsiveness, which means the website being appealing and functional on a mobile browser, wasn't a big deal. So now our clients that are in those agreements with us are able to take advantage of. And five years from now, who knows what the trends are going to be, so we have to be out in front of it in future proof few.
Sure. Questions, comments, discussion? Would you like to know?
Timing-wise, if anybody's interested in the timing of this, once the agreement is agreed to, they will, of course, begin their work. Four to six months would probably be the logical time we can assume to get our new website up and operational. So we'd be looking at sometime spring of next year would be the ideal time. Dwayne or Lynn, I don't know if you want to comment, or Mike, on what your thoughts are with Civic Ready. That's an expensive module that has been added into this from our original discussions, but I think after they viewed that, I think there's a keen advantage to us.
We need to do a better job of communicating with our citizens during an event or something happens. So the Civic Ready, that component, allows us, if the citizen signs up, you can either get a text message, an email, or somewhere through like Daisy's way, explains like a reverse nine-to-one where the system will actually dial your home phone. And we would use that in advance. Friday evening, we had three girls that were missing for a short period of time. If that had turned into something major where we'd had a lost child, we can actually go into the system and pick out a footprint of a subdivision. I'll use Valley Park where the mayor lives. And we can say, okay, in this particular geographical area, we want to send out a message to everybody that's signed up in this area. So we can blast that particular message out. It doesn't necessarily have to be for lost children, storms. Lynn can send information out on incoming weather and the information coming down through the National Weather Service if they sign up. It's passed through the system on out if you're a user of the system. But like the MS-150 bike ride, we could have sent out a message, there's going to be 650 bicycles going out Boston Lane outside the city Saturday morning. If you live in this area, please be aware. And that's where we would use that. We see it as a real benefit to help, you know, communicate with the citizens on the police side where they have some of the break-ins at the local churches. If you have users signed up in that particular area, they can send information out, you know, be aware. If you've seen anything, please call us. We see it as a real benefit, but I know it's an added expense, but in the long term, everybody communicates with their cellphone nowadays. And I'm sure he'll tell you, most of these, when they post these messages out, they're going to be either a text or an email. There's probably not a whole lot of calling the landline, but that is an option that is there that is available.
Thank you. Chief Law, you want to add anything, sir?
No, I think the conference has pretty much covered it for us.
All right, thank you. Questions, comments, discussion, council? Mr. Klickenbeere?
I'll just fill in on that. My parents live in a area up near St. Louis that utilizes this product a lot. And just simple things, just in the last year, on walking trails in the park, there were women that were being attacked and they put out messages in that vicinity, people who used the park, and were able to catch those people. They had some problems in a subdivision where people were breaking into cars, although I wouldn't really call it breaking in because all of the people were leaving their cars unlocked with things in the front seat. But they put that word out, not only did people probably start locking their doors, they did catch those individuals as well. And then there was one where someone used a stun gun on a guard at a mall as they ran out the door with merchandise and that was how they got away. And they blasted out the picture from the security cam and within like 20 minutes, they had a response from someone in the community on who the individual was and they went and picked them up. So it can be, you know, for safety ahead of time, like the bike ride, but it's very proactive on crime and allowing citizens to almost be, you know, those neighborhood watch kind of things, help participate back and forth. So that was unique that I saw after working on all this, you know, my mom made a comment when I was bringing up what we were doing and said that these things were going on there. So I know that works.
Mr. Chrisers?
Our school system has basically the same type thing. In this past week, we had lockdown in one of elementarys. And that message around two parents, let them know what situation was and all of a sudden it was resolved, that it was over. So immediate, no cancellation, all kinds of things. So it's a very, very handy piece of information. Yes, it is.
Reach a lot of people in a lot of different ways very quickly.
People can sign up, you know, whether it's Facebook or Twitter or via the text message or the newsletter. I mean, you got lots of ways that you can hit them with one button. Very nice.
Additional questions, comments, discussion?
The only last component I'll add to this is our current site. We, it was developed in 2008. It's operating on a...
Outdated.
Outdated, thank you. Outdated Juma platform and we have had some issues over the last six months. We're able to keep the site up and running. Sean does a good job of rebooting that whenever we do have problems. But currently, we're having issues and we can no longer support that and continue with that site without doing something. So this is obviously the best thing and just the pure fact that we can push so much information out to people and be more responsive is a definite plus. When we get to the development side of the equation, they've got a great process in place that Civic Plus does, that we'll work with them, will form a committee, make sure that we get our content, get our information right. And no one of the hot-button points is going to be what will the site look like? And we're going to try to do our very best to try to, you know, be able to mirror what we have and there's a lot of better ways of doing things. However, we'll get a committee established and make sure that we continue to update council as we move forward.
Mr. Wilson?
Just to be sure, the first year will be 25 plus the 14.
No, it'll be three equal payments for 2016, 17, and 18 of $14,635. We had two different options on how we were going to do that and this fits their business model and one that was preferred and it works well for us.
1912 and 25 are talking about as just addition up to the first year, but it also includes the build-in costs.
Right. Second and third year.
So if you add that and then add just the maintenance on the second and third, they'll actually take that first year and you can divide it over three, so it'll only end up being 14 a year for the first three. And then it'll actually drop down, what, about $6,000 because you take out the build-in costs or more. And year four, it'll drop down considerably because you won't have the initial build that's being financed in there. Hopefully that helps.
Can I answer your question, sir?
I don't know.
The other thing I might mention is that...
Clear as night.
Basically, what they, they were reading, their contract stays 25.99.
25, 625 for one year and the Civic Plus 1463 for one year.
Yeah. I'm looking at something different than you, I think.
Yeah, that's where, that is, if you would divide it up and here's your...
That's a lot of...
If you would take the three development and deployment costs handed together, you'd have that 25,000 amount. Yeah. And then year two and three would be the, those costs would be $9,000 for the annual maintenance and hosting fees. We've just added those three-year, all the three-year expenses together and then agreed to three equal payments. So they get a little less on the front end and they'll get a little bit more on the back end and they just finance it, you know, with no interest.
And then year four...
It's on the contract.
Year four on is just the maintenance and stuff and you won't have that financed initial cost in there.
Does that help? Better.
Additional questions, comments, discussion?
One thing that I was going to mention was that we print our newsletter and send it out every month in the water bill and there's printing costs and different things associated with that. So there are some areas that, one of the suggestions that I said to help maybe cover some of the costs, once you've been back to my parents' city, they've gone to printing maybe 100 newsletters and keeping some at the front desk at the city hall and maybe at the community center and not mailing them out to everybody. And you email them out to everybody because the majority of people get that stuff via email anymore. For those that don't have computers or people maybe visit the area, you could have some printed ones. But that'd be a way to put money back into the pocket of the city to cover a lot of the costs, too.
Additional questions, comments, discussion?
Did you really drive down here from downtown Manhattan?
Actually, I've been on the road for about 10 days, so I drove up from Arkansas, so on your way back to Manhattan.
Downtown, beautiful downtown.
Got to spend the weekend at the lake.
Additional questions, comments, discussion?
How about those rams?
Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you, Justin.
Thank you.
On the next item, last item, resolution number 15-R-62, resolution of the City Council of the City Republic of Missouri establishing a background screening policy for specific volunteers from the Public Parks and Recreation Department. Do you like to have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Welcome, Mr. Kelly, give us the overview, sir.
Thanks, sir. First thing I would like to do is apologize, have an open apology. Should have made this happen sooner. It's here tonight. I do feel like if we pass some version of what's here tonight, we'll be in the forefront of southwest Missouri. We've been a little bit lagging behind in this area and I accept responsibility for that. Is this policy needed for background screening? What we're specifically talking tonight about for our youth athletic coaches, is that policy needed? The answer is a yes. The why is it'll potentially deter a person. What we're planning to do is we're going to give that policy to every potential youth coach that comes in our door. Will that alone deter a person from signing up as a coach when they read the policy? There's a good chance it might. If they choose not to read the policy and they go ahead and sign up for a coach, it will potentially disqualify a person from being a coach if they have an offense or a misdemeanor that matches up against our criteria for exclusion. Is this policy perfect? The answer is no. It can be easily circumvented. We can talk about it how in a little while. One specific example is if we choose just to background screen the head coach, a person can easily get a friend, a partner, a spouse, or anybody to serve as a head coach and they serve as the assistant coach or just be involved with the team in general. The other way, of course, is perhaps a person just hadn't been caught yet. They could be a volunteer coach and they just haven't been caught yet, or they just choose to do ill-will once they become a coach. This policy is by no means perfect and by no means eliminate all of our issues there. The only way that I'm aware of that, and it's kind of what we've been doing, that is foolproof, and that's for every single parent we have to be engaged and involved in our athletic programs. Be at every practice, be at every game, and don't leave your child in the care of someone that you don't fully know and trust. That would be my, number one recommendation. I do that with my daughter, of course. If I don't coach her, that's the way I operate. But we can do more on our end, too, and we're going to prepare to do that this evening. What we have been doing for the last 11 years is we hold our coaches to a code of ethics. They are asked to sign a code of ethics. There's a lot of pretty strong language in that code of ethics, but if there is a problem and we, we're only at games, we only supervise the games. We only have staff supervising the games. But if there's a problem during the unsupervised portion of their duties, which obviously relates to practices, we ask for parents to be, to involve and engage parents to give us a call and make us aware of those issues. And that's working, 100% it's working. We get, as you can imagine with 405 teams, we get quite a few calls every year with a complaint on a coach. Every once in a while, some of them are flat-out not legitimate, but we look into every single one of them. We investigate it thoroughly and if something is needed, we act upon it. And that's included in the past, practice monitoring, we get someone out there to monitor every practice, dismissals, bans. Outright, we're not going to have you coaches anymore. So the system we have in place is working and that will not, that will not change, it cannot change, and that'll be in addition to whatever policy we pass here tonight. I do want to take a minute to go over the policy. It is important and there are some complications that we need to make some ultimate decisions here this evening. Basically, how this works is when a volunteer coach comes in and wants to coach a youth athletic team, we're going to give them the policy and in turn, they're going to release a waiver to make them subject to the background screen. Once we've had that signed, release waiver back, we'll give it to our third-party company, which we've elected SSCI, and I'll get into them here in a minute. But they will run the background screen, they will run that against our criteria for exclusion. And if there's an offense, a misdemeanor, a felony, so on and so forth, that matches up against our criteria for exclusion, we will be notified immediately. Different agencies handle this different ways. Some give, some give SSCI that sole responsibility of notifying the potential volunteer of their fail. Some give a canned letter. Some departments give a canned letter. But we will, and I believe it's the right thing to do, will personally notify that coach via telephone. If we can't get ahold of him via telephone, we'll follow up with certified mail. From that, first of all, we're not going to retain any records. We're simply going to get a pass/fail grade from our third-party contractor. From that, that coach will give you, he can call SSCI and get a complete copy of his background screen. He can challenge that background screen if he so chooses with SSCI. He has every, he or she has every right to do that. Why SSCI? SSCI, South Eastern Security Consultants Incorporated, the national partner with National Recreation and Parks Association and Missouri Parks and Recreation Association. They're pretty much the Cadillac in the industry. Their standards are used across the board nationwide in parks and recreation departments and they're pretty much what we use for our criteria for exclusion with one exception, which I'll talk about in a minute. They are the industry standard. There are other companies out there that do it, some of them do it a little bit cheaper. But tried and true, I've contacted numerous agencies on this and SSCI, their reviews are wonderful. They do their business well, they get you the results in two to five business days. We're going to have to make some changes to our registration processes and everything as a result of this, but I do trust that we're making the right decision and the right company. Are they a little bit more expensive? Yes. Talk about finances here in a minute, though. So we get it back, if there are no offenses that match the criteria for exclusion, the coach, he or she is free to go. If there isn't, if there is one present that is issued as a fail, we'll notify the coach. They have every right to challenge. That will result in a one-year ban. They have the right to reapply after one year. Confidentiality, some departments do this differently. Some ask and retain all the records. I don't want to be responsible for that in our business just because the way we operate over there, it is a come-and-go slate as I've ever seen one. I think it'd be best to keep that there. We get the pass/fail notice and we let the third, we let the individual take it up with the third-party contractor if they want to see the records, request the records and talk to them about it or dispute a charge. The criteria for exclusion, I do want to take a little bit to go over this because this is very important. First thing I want to say is we did not just make this up over at our department. This is national standards put out by National Recreation and Parks Association with assistance from SSCI. We did do one variation and that was related to drug misdemeanors and I'll talk about that in a minute. But to go over this for the people that might be listening on the cable channel, the criteria of exclusion, first of all, all sex offenses. Any sex offense regardless of the amount of time said since said offense. It includes but are not limited to child molestation, rape, sexual assault, sexual battery, sodomy, prostitution, solicitation, or indecent exposure. Any coach or potential volunteer that would want to coach for our department found guilty of that offense will never be able to coach for us. Felonies, all felony violence offenses. Examples include but are not limited to murder, manslaughter, aggravated assault, kidnapping, robbery, and aggravated burglary. Anyone found guilty of a felony violent offense will never be able to coach for us. All felony offenses other than violence or sex. All felony offenses of this nature will be within the last 10 years. And that's the 10 years, and Ronnie might have to help me with this, that's 10 years of the conviction or when they were found guilty, correct?
Right.
They may or may not have got that resolved immediately or it might have been a two-to-10-year lag, correct, from the time they committed the crime? So it's not from the time they've committed the crime, it's from the time of the conviction.
Conviction, yeah. Conviction, yeah.
Correct. On to misdemeanors. All misdemeanor violence offenses, all misdemeanor violence offenses within the past seven years. So that includes but not limited to simple assault, battery, domestic violence, and hit-and-run. All misdemeanor alcohol offenses, this is one that varies quite a bit over different departments throughout the country. We ultimately chose the two or more misdemeanor alcohol offenses within the past five years. That includes but not limited to driving under the influence, drunken disorderly conduct, public intoxication, et cetera. We did separate out the drug and the alcohol. Most departments have that the same, we felt like drug might be a little more serious offense, especially with children involved. We separated that out, and all misdemeanor drug offenses within the past five years, and that, of course, includes simple drug possession, possession of drug paraphernalia, et cetera, et cetera. And then finally, the all...